I'll second it.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
All carried. Proved the minutes to June third. And lose the minutes, they are correct, means motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Both carried, plans.
Yeah, I got claims of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-two cents.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? You see anything in there needs to be? Discuss. They have thought, all favor?
Hi.
Both. Carried. General public, anybody here for the general public?
No, me again. Uh, had a call from a farmer this morning and um. They were using the tactic of, oh, the. The uh, board supervisors are changing our wind ordinance and now you might be able to get a wind turbine on your farm. So would you like to talk to us again? As you told them no the first time. And I said, no, that's another lie. We have not talked about changing our ordinance.
How many times have we said it that we're waiting for?
Our comprehensive plan to be developed and then we'll look at the ordinance after that. So. When you talk to these people. Be very careful because they don't always tell you the truth. Done.
Did you get a copy of the estimation? On the temperature raising and changing of the climate? Wind turbines? Okay, moving on, Ben.
Got a couple items for the agenda today. Uh, the first is to approve voucher number two. For the three paving projects. This just pays additional percentages for the construction survey. Traffic control and we added uh mobilization and. We do not have the uh. Certified payroll for mid-states who's doing the milling. So that's why we haven't paid anything on on the milling. Uh, all of the milling has been completed on the farm-to-market project. The STP project and they are. Close to Thor right now on the local project.
Okay.
So.
It's uh. STP eighty-five, five B or fifty-five, uh, it's five.
The next one is a fifty-five, yeah.
Everything is good.
Yes, yeah, if anything, like I said, we're behind on the the amount of work that's actually been completed on the job.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, I'd make a motion to approve that uh pay voucher number two.
I'll say it.
We're all three of them or?
That's.
For all three, please.
What'd you like? Well, okay, well, let's just let's do all three, so all two, all three number two, so that's all.
Oh, still circling.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Both. Okay.
The next item that I have is to approve contracts and performance bonds. For projects LC one seven, one five oh seven. And LC one zero, two two nine zero. These are the box cover projects that we left last month. Um, bridge number five on Virginia Avenue over by Thor. And the other one by Bob Nillis, the shore bridge.
Is this arogness, right?
This is prerognous, yes.
And what refreshed me on timeframe on that?
Uh, I spoke to them briefly. Technically, you're not supposed to talk to them until you have contracts, but just asking what their timeframe was. They said potentially this fall, but they were looking at it for next spring.
And it's for two six seven five five two point twenty-five, is that right? Am I reading that right?
Uh, two six seven five six two twenty-five.
Oh. I I really should take my glasses off when I'm reading numbers because I can see better out, you know. Isn't that awful? Sorry, I just get brand new glasses and I can't see right with them.
If everything is good there, I'll make a motion to accept that. Two sixty-seven, five sixty-two, twenty-five.
Any discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Both.
The next item that I have is to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fuel quote. Uh, this is for the start of July one. New Century FS of Manson had the low fuel quote.
Oh, no, never had that before.
We had. Trying to think of who the company was out of Manson that we had maybe six years ago or something.
Star.
Star, yeah, we had Star Energy.
Star Energy.
So, uh, we've never had New Century, but.
It's the same ones, isn't it?
I didn't know, I didn't produce a different one, yeah. So. If we changed our numbers any, are we still doing the same? Fuel and you just booked that for?
Uh, so the the numbers aren't guaranteed, I mean, it's.
Yeah, we're not saying we're into forty thousand gallons.
Right. It's it's for for pri- pricing purposes, I mean, we could. Could be a hair low, more than likely, or we run higher than what those.
Doing similar at the same price if we go.
Yes, yeah. So we we pay. State average. So. Every day the state will have an average cost. Per gallon of each of these fuels. We take the five-day average and any fuel that we got during the week. We pay whatever the five-day average was. And then what? The suppliers bid is what their handling fee is, so each one of these is what they receive, so if they bring us. Five hundred gallons of gas a haul. They get ten cents per gallon.
Gotcha.
Uh-huh. For that delivery.
What do we burn straight number two?
What's that?
What we running straight number two diesel?
Uh.
I mean, I mean, this is all high fuel and the the number two is.
Yeah.
Okay, that's just a question, okay.
Do we have to burn uh? That and like motor patrol? Can you burn red?
Yeah, yeah. So you. Well, we don't have a separate tank and we've got gas all and diesel.
Okay.
If I get caught with red in my truck, I'm.
You're in trouble.
Deep.
This can leave.
Yeah. But still. It's kind of exhaust, do they, now will they also go with the? Death?
Uh. No, we didn't bid death on here, uh. Death, for the most part, comes from. Either Addison Farmers Co-op who has a pole behind trailer. Or it's been coming from Casey Nielsen's across the street, they also have a pole behind. Talking to W and H, they are trying to get set up for that same type system.
For delivery folks in there, you're gonna have it on pump too, so. I guess.
Well, you just get your death right out of pump.
Tank on the backside building is the new death tank, I guess.
Okay.
Well, with that, I guess if that's. Saving us a little. I would make a motion to set New Century FS from Manson.
I'll second.
In acre special. All favor?
Hi.
Both carried.
The last item that I have on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the counties right away for. Shown excavating and farm drainage. To do some tile exploration south of Gilmore City. Uh, I met with. Dennis Ford, I think it was last Friday. Uh, he farms the ground on the west side on Oklahoma County side. He's got. Little bit of standing water there, I told him everybody does right now, um. But he claims it's been there since. Uh, the first rains that we had. Thinks he's got a broken tile somewhere underneath. He wants his contractor that's doing some tile work for him to. Ensure that it's. Good under the road, so. This permits so that he can dig in the road if needed. Now, if needed, if needed, so.
And this is on the block top then, himself?
Yeah, it's just south of the railroad tracks. So it's technically still inside city limits.
You got all the proper documentation?
He's, yeah, he's called in locates, uh, we've got their copy of insurance, um. As I said, I met with, met with him last Friday. You're good, nice guy, you know.
They gonna camera it, yeah, or what are they gonna do?
Um. He's got one of those snoopers or um. Vax. The hydrojetter, so I mean, he can. Suck the dirt out right down to the tile where they said it might be an issue, so.
Is it like water? You mean, does it get water and then?
Yes, it shoots water and then backs it all up into a large tank. So. It's an easy, I think they call it hydro excavation.
Yeah, they can just go like dig.
Because there's.
Go straight down and.
There's a couple of fiber optic lines that are running in the road ditch, so to avoid.
Actually damaging them. Just go out in the field and dig it up and want a camera in.
Yep, we know.
Yep.
Well, but you're fine with where you're at with that, make a motion to approve that uh application then for showing construction.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Both carried.
Beyond that, we're, as I said, we're working on the paving project, they should be. Done with. Milling this week, once they get done with. Mainline, they'll go back and they'll mill inside city limits. Those haven't been done yet, um. The plant is getting set up. At the quarry right now. They started that on Friday. They're hoping to. Start laying concrete out on Thursday. Yep, there by the railroad tracks. Or we, other than that, we got a lot of phone calls because we had. Two and a half inches of rain in about a twenty-minute span last week and. Tiles couldn't keep up and a lot of cornstalks got washed.
Yeah.
We'll ditch into the ditches and. Yep.
So what do you do in a case like that?
We'll come back and clean them later and haul them to one of the dirt stockpiles and mix them in, eventually they'll. Yeah, eventually they'll break down.
Do caution far less if you get the idea to burn them, don't do that in the fall. Sometimes you do that.
Yeah, they don't burn very well.
No.
Unless you park a maintainer next to it and then, then they really burn.
How are we doing on our road closures?
Uh, as far as I know, we've got everything open back up, there are still a set of barricades at Murray Bridge. As the West Branch was still pretty high last week. Uh, but you can get around the barricades.
Or we go bridge up there, still closed?
Yes, Mormon Bridge is. And it's been under.
We should look, they just probably close that road.
I wouldn't be opposed to it, uh, I know there's some residents up there that.
I know, they went like it.
Does not be happy, but.
Dear.
Yeah. I'm gonna do, but when something, when something happens to that bridge, yes, we would just close and vacate the road. Beyond that, uh. And where you'll see some activity out here in Dakota City for the building pad. This week.
Okay.
Did you buy any clay?
Uh, yeah, Chris Larkin said that they're doing some excavation over. Somewhere close by, so they hauled some clay over to us. Uh, also spoke with. Uh, Joel at Sands and he said that they would. Swap us clay for black, so.
They would.
Good.
Of course they would, yes, yes.
That's a good trade.
It's a good trade, yeah. But they said they'd provide their loader if we provided ours, so basically we load ours, haul it over, they. Supply theirs to load the way and bring it back, but I gotta look and see. How much we got here, how much we're gonna need.
Well, I'm guessing you might have four or five loads there, it isn't like.
Oh, there's not much there, then, yeah.
I drove by, yes. Saturday.
I figured.
Four, five, six loads.
Yeah, I figured we were gonna need about five to six hundred. Something like that, so. Six hundred, I'm sorry, six hundred yards, not six hundred loads. Sorry, yes, six hundred yards. That'd been a lot of dirt.
Yeah.
We're building it ten feet higher than everything else. Uh, I'll have. Contracts and stuff after the meeting, we can sign them. Anything else for me?
No, thank you.
I'll make a sign later today.
Alright.
We always do, right?
Okay, moving on down, through the twenty eighty agreement for. Environmental Health Services between Wright County and Humboldt County, this is your. Your certification, guys.
I was just. Involved, you just share involved, yeah? Okay, they share so well, I am. So Rick and I met with Wright County, Rick Rasmussen was there and Sandy.
I was gonna, oh, you do remember the last.
She was there also, who is the, um, she's their department head of that department, so what they're planning on doing is hiring. Um, somebody with a um. Environmental Health degree, and then she's been doing this for, oh my god.
A long time.
Yeah, a long time, I wanted to say. Twenty-two or something, yeah, it's been. It's it's been over ten years, it's been over ten years that she's been doing it. And um. She um, will train this person. And uh, and then they, that person will do both of our. And then, of course, she's the backup, if for some reason that person can't get to us or one of theirs, she, you know, either way.
They'll have two people that can service.
The area.
Someone should do that all the time.
Yeah. So there shouldn't be a problem there.
And she also goes out on the uh. In her management sites, there's a new hog building, she goes out.
The matrix.
Wait, wait, make sure that.
Is correct.
Correct.
Yep, this matrix, matrix.
Tattoo parlors.
Yep, tattoo parlors, swimming pools. Um, tanning beds, I think, too.
I totally.
Said tanning beds and I think, don't we have? Don't we have an ordinance, ordinance or something where we have to? Inspect tanning beds, I thought we did.
I think we did that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking like a few years ago, wasn't it? But.
And they're still gonna do a, was it, was it like quarterly reports? Okay, what was it, monthly? She said she'd do either one.
I think it was monthly, that he, well. Sometimes it'd be two months, sometimes it'd be one month.
But, yeah, whatever, whatever we wanted.
Right, whatever we wanted, she would do, but then the payment would be quarterly.
Yeah, payment, quarterly, so. But the report could be monthly.
Correct.
And then we look at it a year from now.
Well, it's a two-year contract. And um, so we'd be in, and she said, you know, they're they're not for sure. You know, total costs or anything like that, I doubt it will go down, but.
No, chances are not.
Yeah.
But this, as high as it'll go.
This is, yeah, this is as high as it'll go.
Won't exceed this enough.
In two years, yeah.
If they're gonna be the second person, then it should be. We should always have someone of it.
Yes, correct, and that, that was the main thing, I. Yeah.
And just to refresh people's memory, we did sign the the agreement to break Oklahoma's.
Right, correct.
Possibly, correct.
Yeah, correct, and this takes first, takes, in fact, the first.
July one, yeah, July one, so uh, someone in place immediately, wouldn't, she's already been doing the work.
Here anyway.
Yeah, she said she's already done a couple of like water inspections and um. And she said, that was the other thing, once we sign this, everything she'll get. A list from you, Trish, on who is outside of. You know, the. City residents, so that, so they get a letter that says, hey, if you want your water tested. The letter. And um, yeah.
Because she was saying Wright County had a hundred and eighty-some water tests, ours was like sixty-eight last year.
Yeah.
So then they're, now they've been doing a lot of work in that area over there.
And she said it's really important to get the wells checked. You know, out and about. So. And I think she said it was, I think the water tests are free if I remember right what she said.
They are.
Yeah, I think, I think she, yeah, I think she said there's a, a grant or something with the state grant, if these check.
And she would take care of the grant writing for that grant.
That's right, she would take care of all grant writing, and she says there's others out there that she can do and. And she'll do all that, she'll just put us together jointly with.
Yeah.
With whatever grants she writes, she'll do it for both Wright and Humboldt.
I I was very happy with the conversation, yeah.
Very much so, me too. Very knowledgeable and. Very willing to work together and. She knows her stuff.
You're gonna be paying her a flat fee?
Yeah, flat fee, so it's fifty thousand and it'd be quarterly.
Paying anywhere from forty-five to sixty with Oklahoma, so. Bouncing around, so.
Yeah, this way, she said that we don't worry about mileage, they don't have to send. You know, invoices or whatever and it'll just be flat, no mileage, no nothing, it's just a flat fifty. They'll provide the vehicle.
Yeah.
For the person and.
And all the records should be digital, so they could just zip them over to you, so you all have them.
Right. I did mention something to her about that G, Geo, Geo permitting that we, because didn't they say on that there was some things that we could use? Yep. For that. So I mentioned that to Sandy, so I told her maybe she might wanna get with. Our view on that too, because I wasn't sure how that all. But you know, maybe there's something we could do, even a joint thing with that, if then.
That would be good.
Yeah. Because I was thinking there was something that she said they could import or export or however that, the importer, exporter.
So, go ahead, well, go ahead.
Well, this all sounds wonderful.
I I think it's very sound, very possible, yes, and and should get us away from the bouncing around and.
Yes.
Stability and the sanitary.
Yeah.
With, yeah, this is all sounds good, thanks for checking into it, I'd make a motion, we approve that twenty eighty agreement. For the Environmental Health Services between Wright County and Humboldt County.
I'll second that.
I do all that in there, authorize the chairman.
Can we do that too, because it's the same difference, and along with that, we will authorize the chairperson, chairman. To sign the Environmental Health Services contract between Wright County and Humboldt County.
I'll second both of those.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Both carried.
Yeah, it'll be good just to get that. Don't worry about it, oh, yeah.
Four years.
Yeah.
They don't want to hope you to go. To uh, tell them or where they're going themselves.
Well, like Rick Rasmussen, when we were talking, there's gonna be more and more joint county, there's gonna have to be. Yeah, it's harder to find people and people are just gonna end up having to be more and more joint.
That's it.
You gotta sign it.
No typing and stuff.
Alright, moving on. Down to committee reports.
Alright, well, I didn't have anything official after curriculum meetings last week.
Thursday, I met with Rick Rasmussen and Sandy, there's qualities and other meeting, that's all I had.
I had no meetings other than, uh, I was hoping to get up to Kent. Thompson's, uh, going away, party on Friday. I think I. Speak for everybody, thank you for all of the.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hours that he sat in here and listened to the. Going on of this and the reporting that he's done is. Been.
Yeah.
Top notch, so.
Many, many years.
Bracing retirement, so.
Yeah.
Yes. I was saying, you make us look good.
Yeah. Okay, Monday, I uh, met at the Iowa Extension Office and we had a human trafficking uh, meeting. Um. I've got my folder, but there's um, red cracks where um, you put red sand in the cracks and I'm gonna get with coal. And see if we can't do that in in where, so it's human, it's like red sand and you put it in the cracks of your street and it's where people have fallen through the cracks. Uh, so there's a lot of towns that are doing that.
Oh, that's what it symbolizes.
It symbolizes um, all the, and it's not just sex trafficking, it's, you know, work trafficking, there's a lot of. Young.
Unfortunately, the problem is the counties are getting stuck with all these bills and people falling through the cracks.
Yeah.
We gotta stop. The problem that begins at home.
Right. Yep.
People gotta take. On the responsibility of raising their children correctly. I mean, that's just my statement, because it just seems like we're getting more and more problems. And it's, that's where it starts. And you can't keep depending on the state or the county to correct the parents. Misjudgment or poor judgment. But um. There really isn't the school's responsibility, it's it's the parents.
What I say, or the schools.
Oh, that's what you say, it's not the school, yeah.
It's not the school's job to do it.
Back years ago, you did have teachers that weren't afraid to.
Yeah.
Grab you by the, whatever.
Change the laws.
And I can name a couple that would set you up and.
Yeah. I had a third grade teacher, she'd knock you right out of your chair, she must be. You didn't do it more than once.
But um. But anyway, this human trafficking, it's it's like I said, it's not just sex trafficking, it's all also young, under. Underage. Immigrants that are working in these places and they're going to school during the day and they're also working at night. And so there's a lot of. And they get injured and and that's where. We've, we've had some issues here, even in our county, I mean, a lot of counties wanna. Hide their head in the sand and not accept that there is a problem, but there is a problem. And we need to do whatever we can to um. Help stop this. You know, and we're gonna bring it with mutual ministry, I don't know, but we get all the. Ministers together, that'd be nice, but um. Get them all together and see if there isn't something we can do, you know. Some kind of a safe haven for a night, you know, because sometimes that's what they need is just a safe haven. So that was, that was kind of what we talked about, where um, we're gonna get together a few of us and try to get a mission statement together, you know, so that people know exactly what. What is our mission statement, what do we need to do moving forward and things like that. Um. See here, there's, oh, Thursday. Steve, oh, Thursday, we had the um, sanitary meeting with Wright County. And that was it.
Okay, I had nothing official.
There's nothing else out there, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will, oh.
Re- recess.
Make a motion to recess.
I'll make a motion to recess.
Second to recess to two o'clock.
Yep.
Second. All favor. We are in recess until two o'clock this afternoon.